Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission for January 19th, 2016. We did present about six members of the commission present. Commissioner Pack indicated he may be just a couple of minutes late. Diving right into our agenda, the first item is the amendments from our January 5th, 2016 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Quinney, second by Commissioner Sapolsky. Any discussion to that motion? Anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. The first item on our public hearing calendar is consideration of a change in the future land use map and zoning designations for Okra West at 7800 South and Highway U-111. The applicant is Patrick Holmes from Holmes Homes. The time is now yours.
Thank you. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm a land planner consultant with Holmes Homes. This came in probably about two years ago as a mixed-use project, and then we got hit with the Calum Grade moratorium, and so that has kind of put us on delay for a while. And we're back now to present to you a proposal for single-family development, and we have a concept plan that will reflect that. This is the general plan as it exists now. There's a combination of low-density, high-density, mixed-use, and commercial uses indicated for the property. This is our proposed general plan amendment where we have medium-density replacing the low-density. High-density, where there was high-density and mixed-use, and then the commercial is This plan kind of developed and took shape because of the roundabout right here, which is an extension of New Sycamore Road to the south of us. And so the desire on the part of the engineers is to have a collector that extends north and south through our property coming off that new Sycamore. So that kind of defined our parameters for the commercial area. So that high-density area is a little larger than the high-density and the mixed-use were in combination in terms of acreage. The medium-density is the same size as the low-density was. The line moves around a little bit through that middle area right in here and kind of takes some jobs where it was a straight line. We selected the medium and high-density for the general plan amendment because of the land uses that we're proposing, and we'll show you next the zoning as we propose it. But as you can see on this chart on the side that comes from the general plan, our densities that we're proposing for that medium-density area are about two units per acre. And we base that upon the LSFR designation, which is the previous zoning that was on the property at 2.1. And so we are proposing to develop that area at two units per acre. But because we want a broader range of lot sizes, going down to 10,000 square foot in size, that kind of pushes to the medium-density because the R-110 is there, and that's in your medium-density category. So we're not proposing any more density, but we are changing from a low-density to high-density for that part of the property. About the same thing follows through for the high-density area. We'll develop more like a medium-density development, but we're looking for the high-density designation because of lot sizes. Those lots in this area will vary from 5,000 up to 10,000. Here in the medium-density area, our lot sizes are 10,000 to about 20,000. So this is the zoning reflecting those things in the general plan, and we have some R-110, R-16, and R-15. This is the concept plan that we've developed. We have some open space, and there is a trail system that comes from this collector road and along this collector road down and along the south end of our property. And this can connect in the future up to the shoreline trail that is to the north and west of us. We show some open space, circulation system with the collector streets running north and south, and this one that looks kind of through the project. And all of those are distinguished by lot size and the different colors. The future development is there still as commercial zoning, but there is a group working with us right now on a contracted care facility that you may have heard something about already, but that could also be a neighborhood commercial kind of center, and that's still to be determined for that use on that property. Then we want to just go through a number of the housing styles that we're proposing. They will vary in sizes, of course, for the lots, and this first group of pictures is for the R-15. We'll have some single-story and some two-story product. And we also have some street-loaded and alley-loaded product, where we have lots facing all of our collector streets. Those are designed for the alley-loaded lots, and so we have product that will reflect those alley-loaded uses. Then this is getting into the R-16, slightly larger in square footage, but much the same character of things. Again, an alley-loaded product there, another alley-load. And then into our R-10, we start again with some single-story product, but we anticipate that most of these in the R-110 zone will have three-car garages and make them look just a little bit bigger. But they do meet the minimum size requirements. And good-looking quality houses that we build out of quality materials. Again, an alley-load product. So that's kind of what we're proposing.
Any questions for the applicant?
Sure, why not? Can we bring up the overall design up on the board?
The zoning designation?
Yeah, the-
The concept plan.
The concept plan. That one. So how many roads are going to exit this particular development on the 7800 South?
There's the collector road right there, one, two, three, and four.
But that's not a given because we're not at subdivision yet.
At subdivision, yeah, that's not a given.
Right, per the concept plan, we're looking at four.
Is that the one?
I think that's, right now, I'm good.
And there are two streets proposed to exit to the north, the collector road right there and one of our local streets right there.
Isn't there a railroad track there?
Pardon me?
A railroad crossing there?
Yes. So they will have to be above or below grade, if that remains.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Sapolsky?
I just have one. I know this area is very, there's a lot of slope and a lot of topography there, it goes up and down. What's the idea there? Would the houses be, is your intent to kind of tier to slope?
Yeah. There will be some houses that have walkout basement opportunities, they're facing the right way, and the other, otherwise, they might have a wall in the backyard retaining there.
And that open space, I know this is just concept, but the open space, is that going to be graded to be kind of a flat usable area, or are you planning on-
No, there are some pretty good slopes in there, too. Right around here, that's a flat area in the bottom of a big bowl that's there. And so a lot of this area around in here is a pretty good slope around there. And then at the top, where the streets are, there is pretty good flat area for our trail system going to.
Thank you. Looks like that's all we have at the moment, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCulloughs?
Members of the planning commission, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate you with this site, this property is located on the northwest corner of U-111 and 7800 South. The Maples Development is to the east, Sycamores is to the south. This open space was required as part when the Sycamores was developed. There's a stub street that ties in with the property here at this location. This was the site where the proposed roundabout would be located. The, as the applicant has indicated, there's a couple of reasons why the developer opted to go with the traditional zoning versus the west-side planning area zoning. There was a council action that was done back in 2013 that limited the area of the WSP to the Highlands. And then there was also the Calum Grade issue that we had discussed, it was talked about a little earlier. So for that reason, the applicant has opted to go with the traditional zoning versus the WSP, the current WSP zoning. I think what they've done is they have made an attempt to try to talk about densities or to have densities that were similar to the base densities that would be allowed under the WSP zoning. And so if you look down, I think in your staff report, it goes through that pretty carefully and pretty thoroughly in terms of the overall density of the project. It talks about the number of units that could be allowed on the property versus what they're proposing. Right now, they're proposing 434 units, they'll all be single-family. This is a copy of the current future land use map. On the west side of the property, it's designated as low-density residential, it's high-density residential, and then mixed-use surrounding a community commercial area that's here. As the applicant had mentioned earlier, this area will be reduced in size from, I think, 13 acres to a little over nine acres to accommodate this street that will go up the west side of this area. This area will just be reduced in size, but it will still remain as commercial zoning and commercial land use map designation. The applicant also indicated they are looking at another use on the property, but that's not before you this evening for possible single-living center that's on the corner. But again, that's not before you this evening, it's just the rezoning and the future land use map amendment. This is the current zoning on the property. As I mentioned, it was west-side planning area zoning. This is, the west side is low-density, single-family residential. This is a high-density, multifamily residential that surrounds the mixed-use and then the commercial zoning here. This was, this slide was shown to you earlier, this is what the proposal is. It basically shows that zoning district boundary that bisects the property fairly closely to where the existing zoning district boundary is. This would be medium-density residential, it's currently designated as low-density, but really, the only reason the applicant has selected medium-density is because the R-110 zoning is considered medium-density in the general plan. As you can tell here, the mixed-use is gone. The high-density residential would be just extended into here. This property, or this, the eastern part of the property, would be zoned for R-15,000 and R-16,000. It would make a transition in terms of intensity or density from the east side of the project to the west side of the project. This is the proposed zoning, R-110 on the west, R-16, and then R-15 is shown on the concept plan. And then this again is the overall concept drawing. We had indicated in the staff report that there, my understanding is that, and I think the applicant is aware, that water service may be an issue, particularly for areas that are up on the higher ends of it. But this is something that would be addressed when it came in for a development application. I think the applicant is aware of that. The other issue is, my understanding is that there's adequate storm, storm water service, sewer service, but then access may pose a problem. There are four access points that are shown along here, but if there's a problem where the street had to be closed here, the question becomes where do, where do these people exit out of? So that's another issue that may come into play in this roundabout itself. There is an emergency access that's shown off here. They've been talking to UDOT, and I understand there are no, there's not an agreement in place at this point. This property, as I showed you earlier, is vacant. There will be two accesses that will cross a rail line. I understand that it's not in service anymore, but those will provide access or eventually become another access off to the north. Some of these things, though, as I mentioned, will be, will be, or have to be addressed at the time this subdivision comes in for approval. With that, our recommendation was for approval. We feel like the densities are pretty similar to, if not lower than what would otherwise be allowed under the current zoning, and so we'd recommend approval of the request.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Sapolsky?
Yes, I was just wondering if you know what the closest, like, public transportation access to this site is?
Far Marshall, is it? They said it's 56.
56 west, okay.
So looking more, going back to your comment on the, so city council restricted the WSP to the current Highlands boundary and made no changes to this current property, the designation of the property here. So as zoned now, it cannot be developed? There's no opportunity to develop under the current zoning that it's on?
That's correct. In order to move forward, the zoning does need to be reflected of the council's currently adopted code.
So we eliminated a zoning area and didn't change zoning on those areas?
That's correct. Then there are additional areas out in the west side that do need to be updated.
Seems like we disadvantaged and handicapped ourselves in the process.
Nearly.
The one that I'm looking at here is finding D on the future land use map amendment. Want to tell me more, it's a better use of the property. I'm struggling with this better use of the property as it is, but it's really not as anything at the moment. It's got some designations, but they're meaningless. What's the, you do make the point that it does directly benefit the applicant, but it's a better use of the property than is currently listed.
Well, I mean, I see your point because you've got zoning that doesn't apply yet. As we see it, it would be an upgrade, I guess as we see it, it would be an upgrade to what would currently be-
What would currently be not allowed?
Not allowed.
All right, we could keep turning circles on that one there. What are some other options we could consider?
Well, in order to kind of help you wrap your head around this unique situation, if you look on page three of your staff report, there's a couple of tables that you'll see comparing our west-side planning zones, zoning districts, to the equivalent or roughly equivalent standard or typical zoning districts that are still usable and valid in our current code. So there are options. And to really cut to the chase, this is a legislative act that the city council has to weigh in on, and they have a lot of discretion when it comes to these legislative acts. So your direction and your discussion tonight hopefully will help them determine what is best for the community at this location.
Commissioner Green?
So I've got a couple of questions. I want finding B first. The development pattern contained on the land use inadequately provides appropriate optional sites for use. Are there other places? I guess my question is, what are we saying there? Are we saying that there is no other options in West Jordan City for this kind of development but this piece of property?
Finding B has been something that's circulated through us now for a couple of years.
I'm sure it has been.
Based on your interpretation right there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly right. You know, we acknowledge that there are other places in the city that can accommodate single-family homes. What this really boils down to is just the best fit for this property.
And then my next question on that was, the amendment constitutes, this goes back to finding B that Commissioner Loews was talking about here a second ago, the proposed amendment constitutes an overall improvement to the adopted general use plan. I mean, it really doesn't have any general use right now. So it probably is an overall improvement, but I guess my question is, is there a better use for the land than 500 homes? But, okay, that's a different story, we'll get into that here in a second.
Mr. Hyer?
If I'm understanding this right, if this property had been included in the WSP, then the applicant is actually proposing less home sites than what the WSP would have, and I don't know what that, does that make sense, am I making?
You mean lot area?
Lot.
Or a number of lots?
Number of lots, yes.
Yes, that's correct.
May I add something?
Hang on. So what else would the WSP have given us for development of the site outside of just density?
With the, well, with the WSP, it's type of performance as always, where the developer would provide certain amenities for density bias to allow more units to be placed on the property. So those amenities might include playgrounds or parks or something else along those lines. Whereas the traditional zones are, they basically say, here's your minimum lot size, you all have to comply with that, use the numbers. But what the applicant is trying to do is to make the zoning reflect the base density that would be allowed under the WSP zone. So in the WSP zone, for example, you might have a, I've got a slide here. Just for example, in the HFR zone, this is the density range, so they would be entitled to 9.01 units per acre, but with providing amenities, various amenities, they could buy up to a density of 18 units per acre. So what the applicant is trying to do is keep in line with these base densities. And in fact, they're actually lower than what would be, you know, allowed under those HFR, MFR zones. So that's what he's, I think, I believe that's what they're trying to do.
That was my question, thank you.
Could you argue then that a PRD or a PC is a better overall improvement based on what's there now?
I think the difference with the PC zones, it allows the planning commission and council more flexibility, and also the applicant more flexibility in design. It also gives the planning commission more control over design of the property. So there are advantages, you know, there are some advantages on that end of things.
Yeah, Ray is absolutely right. It gives, PC zone or PRD zone in this case would give the developers more flexibility. The trade-off for that flexibility is to give the city more predictability in housing type and amenities packages. They need, in order to proceed with that type of zone, they would need to perform or promise to do certain things like Ray was indicating through amenities, through housing architecture and those types of things. So with that, there's a little bit of trade-off.
So the question that I have would be then, if we look at the general land use map as it's written, knowing that this was written for the WSP and not there, the original intent of this, and what I'm gathering here, is that if it was part of the WSP, we would have seen stuff like we saw two weeks ago in the Highlands that were trading off some density for the stuff we are, the amenities, the stuff that we spent hours arguing over whether I had one or two percent. So at the end of the day, was the intent of the general plan for this particular area to have more amenities and a more community-like feel than just having the 500 homes? I guess that's my question. Was that the intent of the general plan when it was adopted back in 2001 ever? Was the idea that we have more, a more walkable, open, community-oriented development than just, for lack of a better term, and I know that the developer crucified me, but we're talking about housing development, tract housing, whatever you want to call it, is that what we're talking about here?
The general plan, I think that's more a function of zoning than it is the actual land use. Land use talks about just kind of the overall densities that you might expect in that. And then it's the zoning that actually is what sets the, what sets the specific, how the property will be developed.
So when this was thrown into the west-side planning area that's not existent on this anymore, the intent, though, was to do those very, very things that we have seen over in the Highlands and a couple other places, is to try to develop, that was the original intent of the WSP that this has kind of been zapped with, but that was the original intent?
Well, yeah, because, I mean, that's what it was on.
All right. Did you have something that might add into what we're discussing here?
Well, I'm not sure. But we really were left hanging with the zoning. It was the zoning that kind of went- It was, it was the zoning that kind of went away on us. The general plan is still there and in effect. And so what we really are doing, even though we're taking half of the property from low density to medium density, we really are reducing the, the overall densities greatly. If we go into the PC zone, there is a requirement for a minimum 15% open space. And we're right now at about 11. So we're, we are different than just a, a typical kind of subdivision that you might get on a flat piece of property. You know, we will have some, some other open space and amenities there that, that would not be there otherwise. We aren't complying with the general plan and downgrading in densities from that with the zoning. I think we're, we're taking that kind of traditional approach because that satisfied our needs for densities. But we are giving back a lot of open space due to that would be required. Thanks.
Commissioner Skoski?
Yeah, I just, I kind of have a little bit of a problem with Finding A. It says the general plan contains several goals and policies that apply to the proposed amendment. Examples of these are as follows. The first one is encourage the development of residential neighborhoods with a range of lot sizes to offer variety for home buyers. And the second is provide housing targeted to, for the diversified market. As I look at the, the overlaying plan there, we have medium density to the south. We have another subdivision that's going to be coming in to the south of that, that's medium density. Across the street from U111, we have high density in the Maples and medium density. Just to the east of that, we have high density in partner complexes and high density in, along the Mountain View corridor. I don't see that we're really offering a diversified market by adding more high density and more medium density to that, that same area. I, I would say that the low density is probably more contributing to a diversified range and variety of home buyers in that area than, than adding more of what we've already got. That, do you agree with that or do you think it's, am I upping the market?
Well, overall in this, this area, there, there is a range of, or different products with different lot sizes. So I think you could make the argument either way. I, I really do. There's a range within this development, range of housing sizes and styles. And then across, across the street, we've got smaller lot sizes. So it's, like I say, I think you could make the argument either way.
Thank you.
Now, to write the report, when I read this report and signed off on it, I, I read it to, to perhaps not apply as globally as you did. I looked at this particular development, looked at the range of housing within this development. But your point is certainly valid if you look in the general area of that side of the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Heck?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just following up with what Commissioner Skoski mentioned on page four of the packet. It references page 23 of the general plan. And the whole idea is when we were putting together the general plan, yes, we wanted to offer a variety of housing options to the diversified demographic residents of the, of the city with regard to, while, while also stating that lower density, single-family residential uses are the most preferred in West Jordan. So if you go over to pages six and seven on the staff report with regard to the general plan, it, it is tough because for instance, at top of page seven, the finding on criteria two, it's saying that this proposed decision would not adversely affect adjacent properties. And so it, it is tough to say, I mean, how can you necessarily find it factually that, that high residential, high density wouldn't adversely affect surrounding areas? And then criteria three, the finding is it needs to further the public health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of the city. So it needs to augment the public health, which, as you mentioned, it's, I guess it's in the eye of the beholder. You have a vacant piece of property is, is better than developed piece of property? Or, or is it the highest and best use of this property? So I, I guess what I'm saying is I'm still kind of a little bit of a quandary because it's a quasi judicial decision that we have to make, which requires a finding of fact. And in some of these areas, it's hard to factually assess objectively instead of subjectively, yes, if all these criteria are met. But, but I guess that would be what we're needing to do for our city councils to, to give them our best interpretation of the finding of fact. So I, I see what staff is saying, that it is the best use. And I think that it's good that we're a clean, does, doubles advocate and just saying, what are the options? As you mentioned, Sharon Loz, is this the best idea for this piece of property?
Commissioner?
Thank you. In Finding A, it also says, while lower density, single-family residential uses are most preferred in West Jordan, the city should also address in the general plan a range of residential densities and housing types in order to provide housing opportunities for all age groups and income levels, which is true. But 60% of this development is 5,000 and 6,000 square foot lots, which I don't believe is addressing all residential densities. Where it's that high on those small lots. I believe that they, they could even go with the seven or the eights, make some of those in. Because this, this is going to be, and as Commissioner Green said, and probably the developer will not like that, but it does appear to be just a paper box subdivision with the same house, the same lot size. And maybe become rattles. And that bothers me for our city. I'd like to see our city look upward, not towards continuing with the, with the small lots. And, and there is the Sycamores with the small lots and the Maples with the small lots. They also have large, larger lots. But on those small lots, you can't park in your driveway without blocking the sidewalk. So children have to walk out into the street or pedestrians in order to get across the front of their house. And that's why I feel that 60% of this is very high density.
So this list is a public hearing. Let's see if there's anybody from the, the community who would like to weigh in. So we'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to comment, we invite you to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. If you would kind of give us your name and contact information for the public record. Or not. Then we'll close the public hearing and then continue this discussion. Any other further comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Skoski?
Yes, just to kind of continue the last comment. I live in the Sycamore subdivision. I live down in the medium density area right on Burry Road there. That, I can second what was said about the, the cars being parked in the driveway. My truck is parked in the driveway and it, it goes down beyond the driveway apron and completely blocks the sidewalk. Part of the problem as well is that most of the families that moved into these homes, they moved in when they were very young and they had one or two cars. And now as, as their kids are getting older, more cars are showing up in the subdivision, which makes it so they are required to park on the street. The houses are close enough together that there's no opportunity for sidewalk parking at all. And so what that creates is, is the street is blocked. We have a problem with the health and welfare in the wintertime because snowplows cannot come into the subdivision. Roads are blocked on both sides. And in the summertime, it's still a health and safety issue because as, as you're driving down the street, there's not enough room when cars are parked on both sides of the road for two cars to pass a rest. You have to stop and wait for somebody to come through. And, and if folks aren't paying attention, then you're either going to hit a car or you're going to hit another car driving. And it's a real problem with this area. Already that's, that's medium density and that's what's being proposed for the westmost site. I cringe to think what would happen in the high density area if we had single-family homes in the same kind of layout or structure or even tighter. I think we have a problem with health and welfare.
Commissioner Green?
Trying to think where I want to go with this. I agree with you 100%. I, I, I think the, the problem that I, well, I'll put it on the record is I think the, the city council with, with the cap and grade and a couple of issues, we, and without the exceptions in the policy, I think we have some conundrums here. You know, you've got, you've got a piece of land that we can't make, we can't make anything attached to walls. So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to maximize the amount of multi, or the single-family homes into a, and I'll be honest with you, on a crappy piece of land. This isn't the best piece of land to develop. And so the way the developers are probably trying to make their money is to pack as many houses as they can on a piece of property and make it a single-family home. But we know what, we, we've seen what happens with areas like yours and the Sycamores where 20, 30%, all of a sudden becomes rental properties within a matter of, of a couple of years. We see what, we've seen those happen in, in a couple of the other neighborhoods that, that, you know, a couple near me that we pack those in and eventually they just, people move out, they rent them out. They, they, they just don't get maintained very well and we have a lot of issues. I, I do have a problem with trying to pack that, you know, 5,000 square foot lots, really, they're terrible. You know, like you said, you can't put a truck on, you know, you can't park an SUV, you can't park an SUV on the truck on, in your, in your, in your, in your driveway. Makes it great for snow removal on your driveway because if you're parking two cars in it, you back out, you don't have to, you don't have to push your snow in, you know, in the morning. But at the end of the day, the, the thing that, for me, is that when we talk about it, it's supposed to provide housing opportunities for all, all age groups and income levels, I, I think Commissioner Hanson, I think you hit it right. 60% of this is, 60% of this is high density. And we're not targeting all age groups and all in, now, half of what we are, but that, but that R1.5, R1.6, we're targeting, we're targeting for the entry market, entry market income that it's not, to me, that's not, that's not all income levels. That's not a mix. That's, you know, that's the, we're, what we're really, what we're really doing, this is my perception and my perception is normally wrong, but my perception is, is that we've got one area for the, the entry level homes and we, and we're throwing in a cup, another, another little bit, whatever that ends up being on the other 60 acres to, to say that we're higher, we have higher income homes. And they're going to be, you know, I think there's going to be, I think there's going to be a fine, there's going to be a line of demarcation in there eventually. And it, it's, I think something like that's going to cause a, I think something like that's, in the long run, is going to cause a mess for the city when the intent of the original zoning was, yes, we were going to have high density in there, but you could buy it up because you could put amenities in there. And unfortunately, you know, I, I hate to say this because I was the one that complained about some of the high-density housing a couple of years ago. It is that, and the high-density apartment and some of that led to the cap and grade. But, but the fact of the matter is, is that the multi, the multifamily houses with amenities may be some of the things that we want in our community instead of looking like Los Angeles.
Oh, thank you. Just trying to further the conversation because I see things both ways here. And I'm just trying to talk out loud here. I'm grateful that the applicant, Mr. Holmes, wants your business in West Jordan. You're grateful for wanting to develop a piece of property, variety of home styles, great. The diversity of lot sizes though, not so great. As Commissioner Hanson mentioned, it might be a great idea to mix in some larger lot sizes within this development. But I think that it would be respectful to us to give some specific feedback to Mr. Holmes as to what exactly that means, so it's not nebulous and ambiguous. Hey, give us something a little different. So he doesn't come back and give us something a little different and, and not have it hit the mark for what we're seeing different is. Because as Commissioner Green mentioned, it would be nice also to have that mix. But I don't think that necessarily there needs to be a mix of everything within the same subdivision. Of course, we've seen subdivisions that just have single-family homes of a certain size. But at the same time, if the surrounding area is already high density, then that doesn't provide the mix that, that we're looking for. So I, I see it both ways right, right now. I think the majority of my, my thought is just seeing something larger. But as you mentioned, of course, that might push the boundary of a developer being able to make, have it make sense, a viable financial sense to do something with this property. If we want to leave a vacant, I don't think that's in the city's best interest. But in the same time, is this development in the city's best interest? Well, that's what we're trying to flesh out, but what I mean toward it is, as I mentioned, doing something a little bit with larger lots.
Commissioner Skoski?
Thank you. The other concern that I have is with high density, where you have this, this many homes together. I, don't get me wrong, I'm not down on high density. I think it's got its place, absolutely. It fits very well in an urban environment and we are growing. It's becoming more urbanized. And there is potential here, I mean, we have the train tracks that run to the north. This would be, if we had a tracks line that came out here, this would be a fantastic TOD development. But we don't have that right now. The other, the other item that we have is, is that the closest mass transit stop is almost two miles to the east from this area. And if you go straight down 7800 South, you cross three freeway speed roads that don't have any kind of protected pedestrian crossing. So the, really the only way that you can live in this area, in this size home, is if you have cars. And, and again, that creates the issue of the traffic on the streets. It creates a lot of those same problems. And yes, there's access in and out of the subdivision and, and, you know, for cars. But I'm more concerned about what cars are going to be doing while they're in the subdivision. I think, you know, I, I'm, I kind of agree with Commissioner Green in that I think it would almost be better if a town home style was, was put in mixed throughout. You know, I, I, I'm not a fan of just straight town homes in an area. But if, if they're intermixed among single-family homes and other things, then, you know, it would allow for more open space and I guess less restrictive traffic.
Unfortunately, it's not an option with the...
Right. With the current zoning.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I'd just like to ask Scott a real question. In the high-density area, I know we're now looking at the commercial area. At this point, we have talked about senior housing. If you look at the senior housing we have now, it's, it's high density, but it's very well done. Is that possible in this, this area rather than these 5,000 square foot lots?
It is possible. In fact, their previous concept plan showed exactly that. They were not able to get that, the previous plan grandfathered in before the cap and grade ordinance came into play. And so that's why...
But that senior housing was one that we couldn't restrict by Utah State law.
Right. So I assume that you're talking about things other than senior housing. And so they...
No, I'm kind of good with that. Like the Jordan Villas or that type of thing that, you know, is 55 and over.
Right. They could certainly come in and get, and expand that. But I don't know if the market that far west would support that.
And that's true due to the lack of the tracks and that type of thing. I just kind of think that were possible to do that. Thank you.
And while we have the floor, actually, it's great.
Just a thought on the, the parking in the front yard area. I mean, in the traditional zones, in their own 5,000 district, the minimum front setback is 25... front setback is twenty-five feet. Um, I think in some of the areas, like in the, the Sycamores, it's in a PC zone and I think there may have been some, uh, some middle room on the front setbacks for, for those, which could easily have reduced that to eighteen feet, so if you had a twenty-foot pickup truck, it's gonna hang over the sidewalk, but just, I just wanted to mention that.
So this, this high-density would be in the traditional, so it would have the room of twenty-five?
Correct.
Yeah, just doing a quick measurement in the Sycamores, uh, it looks like, uh, you've got about an eighteen-foot setback from the front of your garage to where the sidewalk begins, so that's why you have those parking issues.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Green?
Here's, here's my conundrum, besides what the city council's given. The west side of West Jordan, I mean, the east side is pretty much set just like what, like Salt Lake County grew. You know, it, it, it grew as a, as a suburb and we put in quarter-acre lots and that's the way we did things in West Jordan and this end of the valley for all the way that I grew up. Things have changed and, and I guess my quest, the, the, the difficulty that I have here is, what's the, what's the legacy for the future? I, i- is this, is this, i- is this more of suburbia or have we grown up and we want a better city and what's the better plan for that? And that's where I have the, that's where I have the, the, the difficulties, is that we've, we, you know, we've looked at other developments that have come into the city and, and, uh, is, is what we want a hundred and forty acres of just homes? My observation is, is that yes, there's eleven percent open space, but it's the, that's eleven, it's, it's just like some other developments we did, that we've seen, it's eleven percent that you can't build on. If that was flat land, that eleven percent wouldn't be there. Uh, you know, it's, it's part of the gravel pit and nobody wants to fill it in, and so that's why it's gonna be graded out that way in landscape, so, uh, the, the, the difficulty I have is balancing, is the zone, is the zoning appropriate for what the, what we want in the future of West Jo- West Jordan? And does it meet the, the real intent of the general plan? Or is this, is this just, for lack of a better term, continuing business the way we've always done it? And, and if we do, that's, we'll, we'll continue to get what we've always gotten, so that's where I'm at, uh, that's where I'm trying to figure out where I really wanna go with this.
Commissioner Henry?
Based on the, uh, information that we have, the, the developer is kind of, uh, in a conundrum too, because they're, they're trying to, uh, massage this so that it, so that it works and you have a blended, uh, density. I, I am a little bit concerned about the higher density, but I think that there's also a market for it and if, if we can do it the right way, we can accommodate the, the, uh, developers and, and bring people into West Jordan who are, who are now having to go to, uh, Harriman and, uh, farther, farther south in order to find affordable housing. So I, I commend these guys for trying to, to make, uh, something work that they don't have a lot to work with, so that's my, my two cents.
There almost sounded a motion. Maybe not. Uh, anybody interested in, in proposing a motion, based on our discussion here this evening? Commissioner Scotty?
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and renewed evidence and further explanations and discussion received in the meeting today, I move that the plan commissioned forward a negative recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use for the one hundred and thirty-eight point five acres of low-density residential, high-density residential, mixed-use, and community cur- commercial to a medium-density residential, high-density residential, and community commercial designation on the property generally located at eighty, or seventy-eight-hundred south in U one-eleven. Specifically, the reasons that I find, uh, that to be is that I don't feel that finding A, uh, non-diversified market was met, and I also have concern with finding E. I know that, that the idea of, uh, general improvements of infrastructure are kind going to be added along the way, but I don't feel that it's there and I don't feel we have a specific enough plan to accomplish that.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Green, discussion of the motion, Commissioner Pack.
Thank you, just to clarify for discussion and a motion, what we're really doing here is, as was just moved, we're discussing the future land use map amendment, not necessarily approving exactly what the developer wants to do with the concept plan.
Correct.
Am I correct in that? So we could theoretically approve this future land use map, but then the plans would have to come back to us at future time if we were going to go with what the developer is proposing, 'cause that's just the concept plan, so we wouldn't necessarily have to approve the concept plan that the developers proposing, but we could move forward with the future land map amendment.
I still don't like that it's going to high-density and medium-density, so that's why I have a problem with it. I'd rather see it stay low-density on the far end and something else, or we have to change it.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Pack, there is no motion for the concept plan. If this was a, a, a planned community zone, then you'd be looking at the detailed layout, so the motion would be just on the general plan, land use map amendment, and rezone, that's it. And they're, they're not bound to that concept really in any, in any way, it just provides justification to, you know, further their, their request for, for rezone.
Right, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause it seems like we're getting hung up a bit on the exact concept, but, but really, it's not that that we're discussing at this point, it's the...
Right, it's the zone.
...use, yeah.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Uh, once we do give them the zone, we're pretty well-bettered them. And they can come in with their five thousand, six thousand square-foot lots and be looking at a lawsuit, maybe if we decide that's not what we want. So that's why I approve that motion.
So by defining this, what, it goes to, uh, city council?
So we're making a recommendation to the council.
Good.
And I, 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 I tend to agree with Commissioner Skoski that, uh, I can, I, I can even live with the, the, what's called medium-density here, the R one-ten on the south end, but the, the, uh, the high-density on the north end where it becomes more than fifty percent of the project and sixty percent, fifty, well, you know, when you look at the land, it, it becomes more than fifty percent of the project, I agree with you. I, I think I wanna, I wanna, I don't think the high-density there meets that, those findings.
Commissioner Skoski?
All right, I think, I mean, this isn't a shutdown to them building here, my opinion is that it's just not the right zoning for the area. I think, you know, we could rethink this and possibly, I would prefer a PC zone, honestly, something that would allow a little bit more input from the city on the development. I'm not against, you know, high-density, like I said, but, um, not in this particular area. I think high-density belongs more in an urban environment, not, not on the outskirts.
Commissioner Henry?
Doesn't the PC allow higher-density? We would end up with the same amount of whole, or the same amount of dwellings.
It does, but it allows us control, more control over the open space that goes in and kinda the design of the community, how, how it lays out, we have more, uh, more input on, um, uh, the way that buildings look, things like that, am I correct in that?
PC zone doesn't necessarily require or just by right allow higher-density, it takes its cue, its density cues from the general plan, and so they use that as a guiding document when they're establishing that. We've got the examples of, of, uh, you know, larger lot PC developments in town, so planned community doesn't necessarily mean high-density. It, it would be all part of the, the discussion that, uh, that we have to have.
But in order for it to work for the developer, they've gotta have higher-density in, in, in order to sell their product and fit within the market range and their pr- the price point that is driving the market right now, and so... And that's, I thought, I thought that I have. Another question I have is, if we do, uh, forward a negative, uh, response to this, what happens to the developer at that point? The city council makes a decision?
City council takes into consideration our discussion and input and weigh whatever opinions and information they have at the time and...
Make an approval or deny.
Make their decision.
Can we recommend the P, the PC zone? Did they consider doing that or happens to have it at work? That is part of our discussion here, what?
Someone else would have, another developer would have...
It would have to come back as that.
Yep.
My PC zone requires a specific concept plan and everything else that'd be along with that zoning, so that one, that one's weird, just because you can't make a piece of property PC without an underlying concept plan.
And here's just one other food for thought here, I mean, I know that if these got built, they would sell. Absolutely, there would, people, people would be lined up. However, we've just got some awesome commercial to come in just down on seventy-eight-hundred south. I personally feel like we've now got enough rooftops going in out there, we're gonna attract a lot more attractive commercial to that area, and as that comes in, this land is gonna become more and more and more desirable, which I'm sure that's why the developer's wanting to move on it now. It's my belief that this will become a prime piece of property in West Jordan, and I feel like we can kinda ask what we want for here, because it's going to be a valuable piece of property. I don't want high-density right there.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I think if we want to prevent the influx that leaves West Jordan and goes south, we need to look at this type of development, because this is the type of development that causes the influx that goes south. And they're not just going to South Jordan, they're going to Riverton, they're going to Harriman, they're going to Glendale, they're even going to Saratoga Springs, and they're leaving West Jordan. And that has been a fact for a lot of years, and it's continuing. And if we continue down this road, it will continue, it will be...
West Jordan will be a start.
So what you're, you're, what you're saying is West Jordan will be a starter?
Exactly. West Jordan has a reputation of being a cheaper place to live. And like I say, I've lived here for fifty-two years.
And I can back that, you know, a lot of my neighbors that have moved into these areas have moved out to Riverton and South Jordan.
Because they want a bigger lot.
They want a bigger lot and they want a little bit more space.
But they also got the opportunity to get a start, so they could do that.
Right, but we have that, we have that here, we have it here, we have it there, we have it down the road, so much...
My idea is I would like West Jordan to be a destination place, not a place people wanna move out of when they can afford to. I'd like them to stay here. I'd like this to be a city that we're really proud of, that we want to live in, we could say, I'm on an acre, so, you know, I'm not on five thousand square-foot lot, but I, but we got, that was the smallest lot size you could buy, and there was only four thousand people in West Jordan. But I think that we want to be a city that people want to live in, people want to move to, not out of. And that's why I feel like this is, if they threw in some bigger lots, you know, Santa Fe, New Mexico has a thing that, and this is getting off track a little, but they come in with a bigger lot subdivision, but they throw some smaller lots in, so people that can't afford the bigger lots can still live in this nice area on a smaller lot. And that's a, a great idea, because they stay there during a nice development, and I'm not saying this wouldn't be a nice development, but it is, to me, a trap development. I apologize to the developer.
Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one. You wanna take the zoning amendment?
Oh, yes.
All right. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the plan commissioned forward a negative recommendation to the city council to rezone approximately one hundred and thirty-eight point five acres of property, generally located at seventy-eight-hundred south and U one-eleven, from mixed-use, uh, high-density multifamily residential, low-density single-family residential, and community shopping center to R one-ten E, R one-six B, R one-five A, and SC two zones, specifically for the same reasons mentioned in previous motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Green, discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one. Brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is, uh, an item that was sent back to us from city council regarding, uh, text amendment regarding, uh, mural art. Mr. Thorpe, this is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tried to put everything in the staff report, so I'm very happy to respond to questions.
Questions for, for, for answering?
Thank you. I have some problems with this, Bob, because, um, and when I was on the council, they, these are my same problems. They don't have to get a permit. Now, I agree with the, you know, no hate, no obscenities, nothing of that type of thing, but nobody looks at this before they do it. It doesn't come in for administrative review, uh, they don't have to get a permit, they can cover all four sides of their building, we don't know what it's going to be until it's done, we don't know what the wall around it's gonna be, because we're allowing that also. And that bothers me. I think there should be a percentage of tra- of, of coverage, I don't think all four walls should be allowed to be covered with it. And I think that it should at least have to, if not get a permit, get administrative review, so we know what we're getting before we do it, as we did with the Mexican restaurant that started all of this.
Well, we, we thought having the owner be the only one that could do that would limit the occurrence of what we saw. And really, uh, is it up to the city to tell a property owner what they can do if it's tasteful and if the owner of the property really wants to do it?
We don't know if it's gonna be tasteful, and if the owner of the property puts up a sign advertising their business, they have to come in and get a permit.
Well...
We are telling them what they have to do.
I mean, you make a valid point, it's just in our view, we, we probably don't wanna get into the permitting business to approve Art A and not to approve Art B, uh, even though they may not be obscene or hate speech or advertising, but yet the city's put in the middle, at least by appearance, that somebody's gotta get a permit in order to, to put art up on their property. Now admittedly, that's the way Portland has gone, so there are examples of cities who are willing to get into the permit business.
Commissioner Green?
So, uh, who determines if this is exempt under the sign code because it communicates hate speech?
Well, it would be up to the city planner to look at the state definition, definition of hate speech and determine whether that is communicating... definition of hate speech and determine whether that is communicating hate speech.
I, I guess my question is, doesn't that put the city planner, I'm going to throw Scott on the, under the bus here, doesn't that put Scott in a position where he becomes the censor for the city?
Well, if we have a complaint, uh, that there is hate speech, then it's his job to interpret the sign code. And in this case, looking to the state code would be in the initial position of making that decision. His decision could be appealed to the planning commission. And the planning commission's decision could be appealed to the city council. And the city council's position could be challenged in court. So I think you could say that there are opportunities to be censored all up and down the line.
So where in, where in Utah, which, which part of Utah code are we referencing with the hate speech?
In the criminal code, hate speech is made a crime. And, and I believe also an enhancement to a crime. I can't necessarily give you the exact location.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about sign here. What, so I guess, I guess my question would be back is, under, under Utah code, what can be prosecuted for hate speech versus a political, versus a political statement that you put on the side of your house? Because I mean, that, you, you, we're getting into a serious free speeches, you know, I, you know, when we're talking about works of art, we're talking about some serious restriction on free speech of speech if we use the Utah criminal code for hate speech, aren't we?
Uh, we don't believe so, but that's why we have smart people like Scott. For example, in my view, the Confederate battle flag is not hate speech. In my view, uh, swastika would arguably not be hate speech. A statement of kill the Jews would be hate speech. So, but Scott would be in a position to have to make that ruling.
Commissioner Beck?
Oh, thank you. I've been thinking about this ever since we saw this the first time. It's a delicate one, right? You're, you're always trying to balance property owners' rights and free speeches we talked about. But, but the more I think about it, I, I know that we need to be a recommending body in the city council. And without any prejudice against any religion or ethnicity or race or, or as type of establishment, I, I look at the example that we've had to reference that precipitated this. And I'm wondering, is that really what we want West Jordan to look like? And when we first take, took the vote, it was a major consideration stating that, well, would we really have that many property owners who would allow that much mural art to be put on their property? But maybe we do have a property owner that, that wants to do that. And then it was talked about, it couldn't be advertising. Uh, it couldn't have, you know, Utah Jazz logos all the way around. It'd be advertising or advertising a business. But even with regard to the things I believe in, in my religion or ethnicity or, or race, I, I don't think that it would be in West Jordan the best interest to have a building plastered with, with certain images or, or sayings from, from either that religion or that background. So I, I still just have a problem with allowing such a massive area of a building to be painted in such a manner, whether it's a work of art, whether it's a sign. And so I know we, we already went through this the first time. And as the second paragraph on section two in background states, there really isn't that much specificity given back to us from the city council. But they want, you just say, hey, look at it again. And so looking at it again, I'd still be of that same opinion that I think our job is to recommend and be a voice for the citizenry and also communicating to city council what we feel is in the best interest of the community. And I don't think that the community would want a lot of buildings like we've seen the buildings are that have precipitated this idea. So that's why I have.
Well, if, if I may, I think we're fighting the last war. I, I really think that that restaurant is an anomaly.
Definitely.
I, I really don't think you're going to see a sudden flood of people painting their businesses with art.
And that's why we forwarded the recommendation that we did last time. At the same time, it still does open up the opportunity for that to happen. So I, I still keep going back and forth on that where yes, property owners should be able to do what he or she wants. While also wanting to make sure that the overall good of the community is safe for her to do.
Is there anything here that prevents me from authorizing someone to do this to my house?
Uh, this does not apply to homes.
Unless it becomes politically charged enough that we address it?
Well, no, this, this does not apply to a home.
So I, why wouldn't I be granted the same latitude as a, as a business then? If we're looking at protecting speech, why is the speech of a business any less or any more protected than the speech of an individual?
Well, the Supreme Court has recognized that commercial speech can be much more regulated than what you and I would call free speech. So what you do at your home is much less to be regulated than what a business can do at their business location.
But we're doing the opposite of that here where I still can't do it at my house, but we've given the business carte blanche.
No, we're not saying you can. I'm not saying you cannot do it at your house. I'm saying the sign code really is applicable to businesses. What you do at your home, we figure will be regulated by your good sense and the interests of your neighbors.
If I could clarify.
Hey, whatever you want on your garage door.
You can put that big red U on it.
As the code currently states today or allows today, uh, you look on the last page of your staff report of the legislative changes, you'll see part Q already says that it currently allows, uh, as an exempt, you know, from our sign code, art, art or art forms that do not contain or apply any commercial message. I, I started working here in West Jordan in August. Um, this all kind of went down before I got here. Uh, but I was able to talk to Larry Gardner, the interim, uh, city planner at the time. And he indicated that the code enforcement on this particular, uh, Mexican food restaurant didn't kick into, to, to gear until they actually painted the name of their business. Once they did that, when it started to advertise it, uh, name of their business, then at that point, it, it transformed from being art to an actual wall sign. And so we were able to, to, um, kick in the requirements of the, of the sign code. Uh, up until that point, there was no, uh, official action taken by the city. So as it currently sits today, there is no percentage requirement or, or any other parameters that, that we could hang or huddle. So that's it's all of this discussion. I just want to point out where we are right now with our code.
So where does the, where does the cultural end in the advertising begin? If I have a, if I have a karate dojo and I, and I make a karate mural on the entire side of the wall, is that, is that the culture or is that advertising the business?
In my view, that's advertising that particular business.
But karate is also a lifestyle. So if you don't put the name of the business on there, is that, is that what you get to say?
And I would, if, if that were to come before me, I would say that's advertising. You got to meet our sign requirements. And if they balked at that, I could say you can appeal my decision to the planning.
See, here, here's the problem I have. And, and I agree with you, the Supreme Court, back in the Metro Media case in nineteen eighty-one, clearly differentiated between commercial speech and between regular political run-of-the-mill speech, if you will, non-commercial speech. Problem is, is the last thirty years, the Supreme Court, given, given what they, they put in the decision last summer in the, in the, in the Reed versus Towne and Gilbert, Supreme Court's almost eliminated the whole idea of commercial speech. They drifted, they drifted away and, and basically to the point where they're saying speech is speech. And, and I agree with, I agree with you. If, for example, I have, I have the water stored over on sixteen fifteen less, Seventy is South. And I have, and we have our regular sign up that says, go H two O. Now, if I go put a sign, if I go put a banner out on the front of my store that says, water is the basis of all life, is that commercial or is that non-commercial?
You're advertising a service that you provide.
Am I or am I stating a fact from Wikipedia? So you can see where, you, you can see where I'm going is that, you know, what's, what's.
Wikipedia doesn't have facts, just for the record.
What's that?
It says Wikipedia doesn't have facts.
Okay. By the way, Wikipedia has no facts. So, but, but you can see where I'm going with that is that if you have a sporting goods out, if you have a, if you have a pet store and you paint a dog and a cat and a fish on the side, are you advertising or is that commercial or is that non-commercial art?
That's advertising.
If, if you have a grocery store and you put Andy Warhol's Campbell suit photo, Campbell suit picture on the side of it, is that commercial or non-commercial? We're, we're getting into an area that constitutionally, I'm not sure we can, we can differentiate there. And so the problem I have is we thought, we're talking about commercial speech, we're talking about obscenity. And at the end of the day, we, we ought to be figuring out what the reasonable time, place, matter restrictions are and what we ought to be, what we ought to allow, whether we allow lighting and percentages and those kind of things. But I have to tell you, given the way this is currently written, I'm not, I'm not sure I could support it. It, it just, it, it, and, and you know, when we, when we, I, I'm going to deviate, I'm going to go to the other page, but we have the definition of sign. If you, if you think about the definition of sign, and, and we look at, we're modifying that as well as part of this recommendation. It says the term sign doesn't, the, the sign includes all kinds of things. And then it says the term sign doesn't include flag emblem of any nation, organization, nation, state, county, city, or works of art. Then it no way identifies a product or a business. So if it doesn't identify a product or a business, then it's non-commercial. So the picture of the karate would not be, not, would not meet this, but we've got, as you saw here, it's not, we see multiple interpretations of that, which, which is going to set us up for failure. The other thing that I see as we, as we talk about terms sign, it, I can put up an American flag and I'm okay. And the sign ordinance doesn't apply to me. I can put up a state flag. The sign doesn't apply to me. I can put up a NATO flag and the sign doesn't, the, the sign ordinance doesn't apply to me. I put up a BYU, Utah, Utah State, Weber State flag and the sign ordinance now applies to me because it doesn't, it's not exempt under this rule. So from, from my perspective, we got some serious issues with the sign ordinance. And based, actually based on the way I read Reed versus the Towne and Gilbert, the whole, the whole West Jordan sign ordinance is unconstitutional in the first place. And all we're trying to do is put a Band-Aid on this by putting, you know, adding work of art. If, if we wanted, if we want to put a Band-Aid on it, I guess we're okay. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure that this is not going to solve much of a problem. First off, we don't have that many people that, that are going to do that. And second, I, I agree with Commissioner Hanson. I think the permit part is the part that we want the most. If we're going to allow that kind of stuff, we need a per, we need a permit piece. We need to be able to have something that demonstrates the property owner's affirmative, uh, affirmative consent on that. Because otherwise, all the city's going to be doing is going out and checking, hey, is that graffiti or is that, you know, did you have your? And we're going to track down property owners and all those kind of things. And we're getting in the middle of a mess that I'm not sure that we need to be in unless we make this, unless we clarify this. So that's where I stand on this one right now.
Commissioner, buddy?
Lots come up since the, uh, since I originally pushed my button. So thank you. Um, hey, I was on board with this, um, last time I was on board with this still. Listening to this, I'm kind of moving my, my needle a little bit. My, my first thought is we keep talking about the fact that we're not going to have a flood of people running in the door to do this. I don't think that that matters because we can't anticipate if there is. We need to think about this as if everybody wants to do this or nobody. I can't, I can't sit on it and say we're okay with, with this because we have one restaurant that wants to do this. Because as soon as they get permission to do this, then other people might get brave enough to attack. They just may not want to jump into the water right now. Um, that means that I also remember seeing this conversation on, on Facebook and the support that the, that was on and out. That was a very small demographic, but it was widely supported that this company should be allowed to do what they want to do with their building. You had to go back and forth. My third one is going back to the original thing that, um, Bob was talking about with enforcement. If they pay something on that, that becomes termed offensive, until that's given a resolution, who's enforcing them to take it down? If they pay something on there and I'm offended and I go and I complain to Scott and Scott says, yeah, that's offensive, but I, they, but you don't agree with it. He can't force me to take it down if I say, no, I'm going to appeal this to the city, to the planning commission. Or I'm going to the city council or to the state. All through that appellate process, they get to keep it up, right? So where do we draw that line? That, that's where I kind of come in line a little bit more with the commissary agreement saying that maybe we need to have an acknowledgement saying, if this is found to be offensive, I can take it down and until I win my fight, then I can put it back up. But until then, it's got to be down. Otherwise, we just have this message that's up there, offensive, to everybody that has to see it until I lose my battle. And that's kind of my issue with that where before I was fine, let's just let it do it. Let's take permit out. Let's take requiring them to disclose out. There needs to be something that says, I understand that if this is not okay, that I, or this challenge, that I got to take it down until I get permission from somebody legally says I'm allowed to do this.
What if this challenge you get through except you put it out?
At what point, you know, at what point does it end? At what point does it end? I mean, we're jumping down this rabbit hole.
Commissioner Shkowsky?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple, uh, problems. One, one is that, uh, you know, if Scott has the authority to say scrub that off the wall, if that's the way that it's deemed, if we find that it's hate speech or whatever, why is it that we can't have him bring in just a little prototype of, hey, this is what I want to do? And have Scott look at it on the front side? I mean, because that's, in my opinion, that's going to save a whole lot of can of worms, you know, that's been discussed. If someone doesn't like it, it's going to take up public time. It's going to take, it's going to cost the city money. Whereas if we have some sort of, uh, permit required, we can at least get eyes on what they want to do on the front side and say, you know, we're not necessarily censoring in that, um, you know, censorship would start where you say, well, I don't like that, you know, and not have a reason. But if, if we have it written into the, into our code, what's hate speech, considered hate speech, all Scott's got to do is look at it and say, yeah, that's not hate speech. Go ahead. And that, that nullifies one of those things on the front end. The other thing is I do have a concern with, um, mural art being able to go all the way around the building. Because some people will call that art. Other people obviously don't call that art and it bothers them. Um, that can potentially lower the property value or make it hard for a neighboring business to sell their property should they choose to do so. So I feel like, I feel like we just can't let them have carte blanche on paying everything.
Well, with, with all due respect, you will recall that the former proposal had a permitting. And the city council didn't even have one vote in favor of it. Well.
I thought we struck the word permit out of the IR proposal.
But I, I, I was there at the city council meeting, speaking against this very issue. Because it wasn't, I, it wasn't because I was against the, the ordinance. And I think I was very clear that I wasn't against the ordinance or the idea of, of, uh, wall art. I mean, you go down to Redondo Beach. I love the fact that you walk down there and you see Wylens Wayley Wall. uh, wall art. I mean, you go down to Redondo Beach, I love the fact that you walk down there and you see Wylens Wayley wall. And you, and it's a beautiful work of art that's twenty stories high, but it doesn't cover the whole building either. And, and there are, there are, there are lots of things that we can do, but given, given the vagaries of this, I, I, I'm just not comfortable with, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Hanson. I think it needs, and, and you, I think that we can't just say, hey, we have carte blanche. I think that the one thing that you can allow this constitutionalism is to apply for a permit. Multiple cities do that. They, they, they do that to record the art, to make it easier to enforce what is art versus graffiti. They use it as a record of, of the art in the city and as historical documents and preservation and those kind of things. So I, I don't think permitting is the problem. I mean, I have a problem with the term hate speech. Um, I haven't looked at the Utah criminal code lately, but I have, I hate, I hate using the term hate speech just because that conjures up multiple different things and you, you know, and a lot of that is political speech. And, you know, I, I don't wanna get in the realm of where we're, where we're talking about restricting political speech because that's, you know, that, that violates the amendment, you know, that, that violates the Constitution and the First Amendment. I, you know, if there's, there's some way we can write this to come up with something good uh, that, that works, I would buy that. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be the first one to vote for the, for the wall art. I mean, I, I feel bad, I actually feel bad that as you drive down seventy-eighth and thirty-two hundred west, they whitewashed over their whole mural. If you've noticed that lately, they whitewashed it over. Well, there's a lot of time, energy, money and emotion that somebody put into that mural that for some reason they thought they had to whitewash over because of whatever happened in the city and that's unfortunate. Now, if we were to have the appropriate ordinance that, that worked for them, we might have something that, you know, that, that people would respect for that part of the community. And, and I think that right now, I, I, I just don't think that this is it. I mean, right now, given our current, give, hey, Scott, let me ask you this question. Given our current, current ordinance, the way murals are written, the only, the only thing that it does is if it says product or service in it, the sign ordinance kicks in. There's, there, so this, this in and of itself doesn't change the city ordinance that far as it's currently written. Does it?
No, in my estimation, it doesn't.
Okay.
Doesn't the sign ordinance also kick in when it's a certain size?
Not on this, not on the wall art. Oh.
If it's not, if it's not advertising the, uh, a, a product or, or attracting attention, uh, I forget the exact verbiage here, then it, the, uh, it's exempt.
If it, if it basically becomes an exempt sign.
Yeah, art forms that do not contain or imply any commercial message. If it doesn't do those things, then it doesn't register on my radar.
So why change?
Because we were asked to.
And something that I highlighted in my, uh, in my packet here is, is that it was, it's, this is being driven by a political problem. Not a, not a need to address a legislative issue. The problem was that it was addressed by city staff. It made the news and it brought everybody out and it got, it landed on city council's radar.
Yeah, I think you, I think you're right.
So if there had been no political aspect to it, this, this would be a dead issue.
Yeah, you're right.
So are we changing, are we, are we making a legislative action to ease a political uncomfortableness?
I don't see where we're making that much of a change in the current ordinance, other than the fact that we're, we're coming back to revisit this.
Commissioner Green, please.
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm going to, uh, move that we let, let me stop before I make the motion and ask a question. Can, can we table this and come back and we can re, try to rework this? Uh, maybe come up with some proposals and, and sit down and do something? And just table this and, and see what we can, see what we can come up with and then propose it to the city council before? Is that a possibility?
You certainly have that option. If you do go that route, I, I would, well, we would appreciate some specific directions so that we know what to address. Bob, do you have anything?
Well, my, my idea would be if you tabled it, go ahead and knock yourself out.
Okay. I, I move that we table this to, if, if we, we can table this and we can set a specific date, correct? Uh, when, when are we meeting in April? Second meeting in April? I move that we table this to the second meeting in April. And that'll give whoever wants to participate in this enough time that we can bounce some ideas around. We can email them around, we can shoot them around and maybe come up with a draft, draft ordinance that's better. Will that work? With a deadline to get it to city staff by first of April for the meeting on the, the second, the second meeting in April?
Not that being well versed in, in planning commissioners', uh, authority and so forth, do they have the ability to draft language to propose that, Bob?
Sure. But I, I know of no pressure.
Are you gonna take point on that then?
I'll take point on it.
Okay.
And I'll, 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 I'll cut and paste some things and I'll send it around to everybody and we'll get some comments and let's see what we can come up with.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Lawson, discussion of that motion.
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Any else you guys wanna talk about?
This is a big, I'm gonna adjourn. We're back.
Have a motion adjourned? Anybody from Commissioner Spassky, anybody opposed to that?
No.
We stand adjourned until February second.
Yes.
Yes, February second.
Something like that.